This time I'll call the November 18th, 2024 County Council Meeting to Order. Are the mics working? All right. I will recognize the Honorable Debbie Cloninger from District 7 for invocation and pledge of allegiance.
In honor of our joyful Thanksgiving next week, and we're all thankful that a lot, my family's thankful for getting turkey, but I'm sure that a lot of people are thankful for many things. I would like to read this from the scripture, Psalm 100. "Make a joyful noise unto the Lord, all ye lands. Serve the Lord with gladness; come before his presence with singing. Know ye that the Lord he is God; it is he that hath made us and not we ourselves. We are his people and the sheep of his pasture. Enter into his gates with thanksgiving and into his courts with praise. Be thankful unto him and bless his name; for the Lord is good, his mercy is everlasting, and his truth endureth to all generations. Amen."
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one oath of office tonight. I'm sorry if I butcher this name. Ashima Single with the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee. Are you here? If you would please come forward and our county attorney will meet you in the middle of the room. Just come to the podium. We want to thank you for agreeing to serve on behalf of the community on the Tax Advisory Board. Folks don't know this, but we do have, you know, we have our 4-H folks here. We have so many boards and commissions that we rely on our community to volunteer their time and effort. And they do it without, without getting paid. And oftentimes they don't get thanked for the work that they do, but we do appreciate you willing to step up and serve our community on this board.
I do solemnly swear that I'm duly qualified. According to the Constitution of this state. Exercise the duties of the office. Which I've been appointed. And I will to the best of my ability. Discharge the duties thereof. Reserve, protect, defend. The Constitution of this state. And of the United States.
Thank you ma'am. So we had, we had a special treat today. The council got to meet ahead of the council meeting and spend some time with our 4-H group here in York County. We got to share some information and more importantly, we got to hear a lot of good stuff back from the folks who served. And I was real impressed to see how many young folks are getting involved in our 4-H program and to learn about how you do your work through various clubs and work throughout the community. It was a real treat for our council to be able to meet with you. We did want to recognize you tonight. I understand that some members of the 4-H group want to address the council regarding their program.
Good evening. My name is Natalie Estes, and I'm thrilled to share that this is my third year in 4-H. I'm currently a member of the York County 4-H Teen Council, 4-H Gold Miners, and helped this summer as a camp counselor. I've also attended the South Carolina 4-H Healthy Habit Summit and the South Carolina 4-H State Congress. I'm very grateful for the memories and friendships 4-H has given me so far. The most memorable part of my 4-H journey has been with the Dairy Goat Project and it has been truly transformative. Throughout, through this project, I discovered a deep love for dairy goats and have grown into such a more confident person. One of my favorite things is talking to people about goats. It ignites a passion in me to inspire others about the joy, dedication, and hard work that goes into showing these amazing animals. This year, my commitment and preservation has led me to compete at the South Carolina State Fair, an incredible experience that fueled my excitement for the next show season. It has also showed me how much can be achieved through hard work and determination. Being a part of the York County 4-H has not only deepened my passion for plants and animals, but has also taught me the value of giving back to my community. It's encouraged me to step out of my comfort zone, speak up more, and inspire others to get involved. Through the many opportunities 4-H has offered, I've grown in maturity and confidence, pushing myself to take on new challenges and projects. 4-H has truly transformed my life, and I'm so grateful for the experiences, growth, and community it has given me. Thank you, York County Council, for your continued support of 4-H.
Hi, my name is Noah, and I am 11 years old. This is my third year active in 4-H. Since joining 4-H program, I have participated in many different projects and learned a lot. Before joining 4-H, I had trouble making good friends and finding other kids who were interested in things I enjoy, like animals, gardening, and science. Now I'm a leader in my clubs and my community. Our 4-H program has taught me to work hard and put effort into every project. I have learned that I can master new skills like building bridges from popsicle sticks, growing tomatoes, photography, and archery. Did you know you can build a crane with cardboard, string, and tape? My team and I created one to move materials at South, at the South Carolina Engineering Competition last year. This summer, I learned how to catch a fish and how to snow, how to snow chickens. Our leaders help us to learn to show animals confidence and patience. I have learned a lot about chickens and even more about myself. 4-H has inspired me to take an active role in my community, to, to, I enjoy volunteering at my church, Community Garden, to grow food for the local soup kitchen. Our 4-H leaders have helped our Community Garden project with seeds, volunteer labor, and by arranging educational meetings with master gardeners. I'm meeting lots of new friends and pursuing amazing opportunities through 4-H clubs. In addition to meeting master gardeners, I had opportunity to learn from, from an archaeologist and a veterinarian. I have also had the great honor of speaking with state legislators in Columbia about everything I'm learning. Tonight, I'm honored to speak with you and to thank you for supporting me, my friends, and everyone in our local 4-H program. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Avery Smith. I'm 12 years old, and I've been enrolled in 4-H for about two and a half to three years now. I'm in quite a few different clubs, and those are the Happy Hooves Horse Club, the Pumpkin Pie Dairy Goat Club, the Science Club, and the Sewing Club. In addition, I'm the treasurer of the Happy Hooves Horse Club and the Pumpkin Pie Dairy Goat Club. 4-H has done quite a lot for me, and some of those things are giving me leadership and presentation skills. For example, if I hadn't learned those skills, I wouldn't be able to speak to you here tonight. I've got a lot of good memories from 4-H, and some of those are from chicken shows. It's a lot of fun to be able to get together and show with friends, and it's overall just a really fun experience. The other really fun memories are from the Hippology and Horse Bowl competitions. Hippology and Horse Bowl is a study of the horse. So pretty much me and some other kids get together a couple times a month, and we study horses and talk about different things, and then we all go to a big competition as a team and compete against other teams at the state. As you can see, 4-H has really impacted me, but 4-H can also impact the community. They can help the poor. They can help do trash pickups and other service projects. For example, I recently organized a path volunteer day where me and some other kids got together and packed up all the things in the past thrift store and got it ready to be moved to the next location. And it also just makes people really, really happy. 4-H is a very warm and friendly community, and we all get to have fun together and learn. Thank you for having me. Good night.
Thank you ma'am. Once again, we just want to say thank you so much for coming to, to council early today at five o'clock to have a meeting with us, and we appreciate the little goody bag that you've given us. We got to learn a lot about what 4-H is doing, and it's not always just raising animals. It's, it's all sorts of things throughout the community.
Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Kristin, are you going to end this or are you done? You good?
Thank y'all. I appreciate it. Have a great night.
Thank you ma'am. We move now to our public forum session. This is an opportunity for folks who have signed up. We have 15 slots for folks to speak for two minute, two minutes on something that's related to council business. If you'll pay attention to the screen, the screen will start blinking, and then it'll go to a red when your time is up. So if you'll do that, I won't have to cut you off. When you come up, when I call your name, if you'll please come to the podium and state your name and give your address before you start speaking. Our first individual who signed up is Brendan McCluskey.
Good evening. I don't know when the clock starts. You'll let me know.
If you, once you say your name and give your address.
Okay. Good evening. I think it's fitting that this room was filled with children today and parents because they're listening to.
Did he give his name and address?
Sylfab proposed factory would store and treat.
Mister, Mister McCluskey, if you'll just state your name and give your address.
Hi, I'm Brendan McCluskey. My address is 729 Warwick Way in Fort Mill. Keep in mind, he is watching. Sylfab's proposed factory would store and treat 22,000 pounds of explosive saline and 15,000 gallons of highly toxic hydrofluoric acid, which becomes Class III hydrogen fluoride air pollution when it exits the onsite acid scrubber next to children, just like these in this room. Hazardous chemical storage and wastewater treatment facility are clear violations of Fort Mill's Light Industrial District. They state in their own documentation, they're connecting solar cells through a conductive medium called closed space sublimation enamel cells together. Yet the location remains zoned with reason as light industrial, according to Chapter 155 of the County Code of Ordinance. Light industrial does not include hazardous material treatment, storage facilities, or enameling. I'm here today to remind you all of the impact that Sylfab development is having on our community. On November 5th, the Fort Mill School Board voted to populate the Flint Hill Elementary School with 800 children. My son is going there next year. Many are like the ones that you see in this room. I've witnessed several neighbors break out in tears over the situation York County has placed us in. Many neighbors have plus, placed their homes up for sale, listing Sylfab as a reason. Some on the school board say the fear is unwarranted. Some on this council might also say so. I don't believe this is fear at all. I think this is parental instinct and common sense. I ask the council, please recognize my son and my daughter's right to health and safety, just like the children in this room, for a safe education. My final question is, since the county has stated as fact, the BZA ruling applies to all future development in York County, and Sylfab solar cell manufacturing lines are planned to be developed in the future, why is York County not enforcing the ruling of the BZA, which is now standing law? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Zachary Zapack.
Good evening. I'm Zach Zapack, 624 Meadow Brook Lane, Rock Hill. I'm a Pennies for Progress Commissioner for Pennies Number Five, and have learned about an issue that is going to be before you tonight on a consent agenda to approve the Pennies Utility Relocation Project. I would like to inform you that there has been some confusion surrounding this, and I'm simply asking you to table that matter tonight until we can get the right people in the room to resolve that matter. Be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Scott Kokenhour.
Hey, everybody. Scott Kokenhour, 122 West Oak Street in the beautiful Whiteville Park neighborhood in downtown Fort Mill. And fortunately, I was able to do two years of ag and two years of agriculture at Indianland High School. So I am going to go home, fire up the grill, and I'm still picking tomatoes out of my backyard. And I got some suckers that I did about eight weeks ago that are putting out some blossoms. So we're still picking tomatoes in Fort Mill. So just y'all keep it up. It's good stuff and good memories. Hey, Brown Simpson did ask me to sit on the York County Parks Advisory thing that, that happened a couple months ago. So just here to report that for you, that we had a nice meeting. Unfortunately, there are only three of us there, two from Fort Mill, one from Tugakay. But in our part of the county, it seems like the county's really not going to be able to purchase land or do parks over there. So, and we do want to support the parks in York County, but I think our concept was if we can support our town and the city of Tugakay, come back with 80 or 85 cent on the dollar, back to help our two parks departments. And then we do want Riverbend Preserve to continue to be a great thing and the other parks that we do have in York County. So we appreciate that. And I think leaving the wrecks out of it was probably a good thing, just at this time and everything. So everything, it's the presentation that we saw and the input, the guys from Clemson that listened to us, they were very helpful or seemed like responsive to what we were talking about. So just wanted to give y'all a heads up on that. So appreciate what y'all do. Everybody have a good Thanksgiving. See y'all.
Thank you, sir. C.W. Sin.
Good afternoon. C.W. Sin, 520 West Mount Gallant Road, York, South Carolina. I'm just here tonight to speak to you about a conversation I had with a lady in a grocery store the other day. She complained about food prices, and I looked at her and I said, well, the last time I checked, which was about 10 years ago, Americans spend the least amount of their disposable income on food of any country in the world. So I went back and double-checked, and we're still there. So I just wanted to bring y'all that information so that you would know that. Yes, I am a former 4-H club member.
And somebody who tries to stay interested in.
Thank you, sir.
What y'all will do.
Still got a minute, C.W. You going to go back or you done? Okay.
Short and sweet.
Good to see you, C.W.
Our next person to speak is Cory Zesson.
Good evening. My name's Cory Zesson. I'm reside at 1073 Ellis Pond Drive in Rock Hill. I worked as a police officer in Rock Hill for six years, and I currently work as a police officer in a neighboring city. I'm here tonight to review shelter statistics from the last three months. In August, the shelter took in a total of 211 animals. Of those, 144 were strays, 58 were owner surrenders, and nine were confiscated. Eighty-two percent of the dogs accepted by the shelter were not fixed, and 92% of the cats accepted were not fixed. Rock Hill South was responsible for the most animals overall, the most strays, and the most dogs. Kataba was responsible for the most owner surrenders and the most animals who were not categorized. His dogs are cats. York was responsible for the most cats. In September, the shelter accepted 279 animals. Of those, 149 were found as strays, 84 were owner surrendered, and 46 were confiscated. Eighty-five percent of dogs were not fixed, and 97% of cats were not fixed. Rock Hill South was responsible for the most animals, the most strays, the most owner surrenders, and the most cats. York was responsible for the most dogs. In October, the shelter took in 252 animals. 189 of those animals were picked up as strays, 50 were owner surrendered, and 13 were confiscated. Eighty-five percent of dogs taken in were not fixed, and 94% of cats taken in were not fixed. York was responsible for the most animals overall, the most owner surrenders, and the most cats. Rock Hill South was responsible for the most strays and the most dogs. Fort Mill was responsible for the most animals who were not coded as dogs or as cats. Please do not let these statistics that I just explained to you go on to fall on deaf ears. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sarah Levens.
My name is Sarah Levens. I live at 660 Sunset Point Drive in Rock Hill. So to piggyback off what Cory just explained, I want to elaborate. Overpopulation of animals impacts everyone. Not only is pet overpopulation a burden to taxpayers, but it also affects the safety and welfare of our community as a whole. Too many animals can impact the health of citizens by spreading disease. Too many animals running at large can impact the safety of residents, and too many animals create noise and odor that can impact the community's ability to enjoy their own, their personal property. Animals that are not fixed often become nuisances as males seek females in heat and vice versa. These male dogs often become aggressive, not only with other pets, but with humans who attempt to intervene. Male dogs can impregnate multiple females, which adds to the overabundance of pets in our community. Our county's animal population has exploded, which has in turn created a large number of problems that responsible community members are forced to solve. Those living in York County deserve better. We deserve to live in a community where we are not faced with health, safety, and nuisance concerns that this overpopulation creates. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Karen Brown.
Good evening. Karen Brown, 127 Sunny's Way, Fort Mill. So what I want to give you a, some ideas that we have and suggestions for how to control the spayed-neuter problem that, that we have in the county, with the fact that we don't have any regulations in place. So these are some ideas I want to put out there, and I've handed them out, or Karen has handed them out to everybody so that you could follow along on this piece of paper. First thing, first idea we have on here is to extend our current ordinance to require male and female unaltered dogs to be confined within a building, secure fence, or kennel, or to prevent contact with stray dogs. Our current ordinance only addresses unaltered female dogs. Require dogs to be spayed and neutered unless owner has a breeding permit. Require registration of dogs similar to auto boat and RV registration, hunting and fishing permits, and voter registration. Establish requirements permits and minimum standards of care for breeders. Another idea is limit the number of unaltered outside dogs on the property, including those housed in sheds, pens, outbuildings, et cetera. Another idea would be unaltered outside dog permits, so basically a fee for unaltered outside dogs and no fee for those that are altered. Require all outside animals to be spayed and neutered. And lastly, alter reclaimed animals at the shelter before being returned to owners, being a policy that any animals brought into the shelter would be, like I said, would be spayed or neutered before returned. Thank you for taking all these ideas under consideration. They can be considered single, you know, singly or, you know, grouped together. They can be considered singly or grouped together. Certainly, some more conversation would have to follow to explain some of these ideas and for you to be able to ask questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Michael Robey.
Michael Robey, 1619 Flagsworth Road in Lake Wylie. I just wanted to come here as a representative of the River Hills Lake Wylie Lions Club and thank our Congress, or I'm sorry, our councilwoman, Love, for all of her support this year with the Lions Club, and wanted to invite the council and the residents of York County out to our pancake breakfast on December 14th from 8:30 to 11:00 a.m. at Camp Thunderbird. And tickets are $10, and you can play at the door, or you can pick them up around town up in Lake Wylie. And again, just want to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving, and thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our public forum session. We move now to our consent agenda. We do need a motion. I do need to remove item number 12.
Motion to approve by defer number seven to our December 3 meeting for a vote at that meeting.
That's the only way to deal with that is if you want to remove it, if you want, you need to pull it out and put it on this agenda.
Yep, to new business. So remove number seven.
All right, so we need the motion to include number seven and 12.
Motion to approve moving number seven and 12 to new business.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Move now to our first item of old business. Council to discuss potential zoning code text amendment related to self-storage facilities.
I'll kick us off right quick. That's okay.
Do we have any presentation for management? Josh, any comments or questions? I will say, for folks that are watching or tuning in, we had a meeting about this previously and requested that staff come back with some information. That information was-
Yes, so no presentation for these three items tonight. We've attached a staff report that document the issues in their entirety to the agenda. That document is also in your blue folder in front of you. Our goal this evening is to answer your questions. We took all of your answers, your questions from previous meetings. We documented all the potential options for all three of these issues, and we're happy to talk through each one individually. But I thought staff did a great job putting the issues in their entirety in the document. And at the end of each section, you'll see options laid out. So for the first item, self-storage, there's potential options, and I apologize, there's not page numbers, but what you'll see at the end of that section is three options, and we can talk through those options if you like. But I think, as I've discussed these topics with all of y'all, I think y'all have thought through this and might have things you want to start the discussion with.
I'll start. I'd like to echo your sentiment. Appreciate the work that the Planning and Development Services Director did to put all this content together on self-storage, AGC, and lot measurements. Starting with self-storage, on pages five and six, he did outline options for us. And so when I brought this up to council as a result of us dealing with 660, that's how this all came up in Lake Wylie. I didn't necessarily have an issue with self-storage. What I had an issue with was if you see the self-storage buildings. So I'm more inclined to look at option one, and I would like staff, not necessarily tonight, but I'd like staff to give us a little more information on how they would build out the ordinance related to building setbacks and disallowing on lots with major road frontage. So if they could get a little more specific with those two, that would help me make a better decision. But I don't have an issue with it, and where it's currently approved and zoned for, I just, I'm a little concerned about the need to see a storage building.
Do you want to go down the line?
I'm just asking staff at a future meeting to come back with more information, you know, help clear up A and B. I don't have anything.
I don't have any problem with them. And you might could put a couple of restrictions or whatever, but honestly, most of them I've seen being built are nicer than a lot of the buildings that are people working in.
I'll just say, I reserve my comments to see whatever staff bring back, because it's kind of impossible to make a comment now, not knowing what they're going to bring back. What are some of the requirements or setbacks or conditions that we're going to put on them? So until they bring something forward, I'll just wait.
So does anybody object to that, or we're just going to ask staff to come back?
Fine.
All right. You have that instruction. I don't know that we need a motion and a discussion item.
We can work on that. We appreciate your feedback.
All right. Move now to item number two. Counsel to discuss potential zoning code text amendment regarding multiple principal dwellings on a single lot in AGC District. Anything from?
Yes, so as y'all will see in the document, what we tried to do is we tried to lay this out to show kind of the charge that y'all gave initially, and then how we as staff saw the problem definition, and then really started to unpack that. I think as we dug into this with staff and we thought about this, to us, yes, this started with two primary dwellings on a lot, but I think there's more to this. And so if you go, and I love the blue chart, I can't tell you what page it's on, because I don't have page numbers on mine, but it shows Table 6, Existing AGC Lot Sizes. We've got a total of 6,200 AGC parcels, 6,241 exactly. 2,100 of those are under five acres. And I think that really is what we're dealing with here, is there's a lot of AGC lots that are small, and so we don't get a ton of requests for two new primary dwellings on one of those lots. But what this really is about is what kind of density is council interested in seeing in our rural zoning districts? And so the more we unpack this, the more layers we pulled back, I really am at the point where I'm, as your county manager, recommending number five on the options, which is to consider a larger scope project where we could evaluate the rural zoning districts in their entirety and give you more feedback on the potential options that we see in order to address some of the overarching concerns. Instead of trying to fix this quickly, I think this is an opportunity to really unpack some of the changes in the code and how that might have impacted this, but also just decisions that have been made since the late 1980s when this was first done. We think studying the rural zoning districts, we can start to solve some of the underlying problems that we're seeing as a high-growth county. That would be our recommendation at this point, but you'll see that's one of five options before y'all that we've put out there for you to consider.
Madam Chair, I have prepared notes, so if you don't mind, because I'll pick up on some of what Josh just shared, if that's all right. Is that all right?
Do you want to lead?
Sure. So I look at this two ways. I look at this issue from a council perspective, and I'll look at it from a homeowner or a landowner of AGC. So I'm trying to look at it through both of those lenses. And the three things that I came up with that I think as council members, number one, York County has been an agricultural county for as long as we can remember, going back to the beginning in the 1700s. And so one thing that in our strategic plan, it's baked into there that we're looking at agritourism, we're looking at agriculture and what we need to do with it. So, you know, if we could encourage more people to farm the land that we have, I think that would be a great objective, but we can't control that. We'd also like to see some of our AGC land remain green space so we can embrace our identity of having a rural community, which is part of our strategic plan as well. But then I think we have to offer the landowners of AGC options with their land. So, and I am thankful again of the information that was sent out. You referenced page 10, Josh, that's page 10 that has, that's the graph that shows 6,241 AGC parcels. Well, there's actually 3,663 parcels that are 10 acres or less. That's over 58% of those parcels, of the 6,241 parcels, that are affected by the code change in 2022. So as a council, if we're concerned about property owners' rights, we, not we, the council of 2022 affected the rights of 58% of these landowners. I'm concerned about that. So then you say, well, what is it that you might consider doing? So in the document that Josh is referencing, and that I'm referencing, that we all have copies of, that gives options, I'd like to get further clarification on numbers 2, 4, and 5. I'm not too interested in 1 and 3, but I'm interested in 2, 4, and 5. What am I interested in? Well, when you look at AGC, the way I broke it out as I thought through this is, you've got family members and non-family members associated with AGC. So let's take family members first. These are just some notes I had. What is a family member? It's a sibling, a child, or parents. To me, if somebody owns 100 acres of land and they want to give someone, and arguably even more than one person, the right to an acre of land or more, I think they ought to have the right to do that, a family member. But I think it ought to come with a five-year hold where they can't build their house and turn around and sell it to somebody that's not in the family. They'd have to wait at least five years. I think that, obviously, we have county standards, so they've got to meet the common access road and utility right-of-way requirement, so that's a must in order for this to happen. And I think non-family members, probably, we set a floor of three acres or more. So if a non-family member wants to be on a 100-acre plot of land, they can, but it would be on three acres or more. I think that, think about this, if you own AGC, and I've talked to some people that own AGC, and I've talked to people that represent landowners that own AGC, and what these individuals are telling me is, a lot of the people that own AGC land don't live here. And they're of the opinion that a number of people don't really know what kind of right they have with the land they own. So if your land is zoned AGC, depending on how much road frontage you have, then the value of your land could be $10,000, $15,000 an acre, depending on your frontage and other amenities on your property. But if you had the right to develop your land like you did in the code prior to 2022, 2022, you could take a 100-acre tract of land, and you could parcel it, you could put a road through it, you pay for the road, obviously, meeting county standards, you could put a road in your property, and you could have theoretically up to 33 parcels of land, as long as they average three acres or more. Now, you own AGC, and we're determining the value of their land, and if the land's AGC and limited to just AGC, I just mentioned, today, today's dollars, it's worth $10,000, $15,000 an acre. I went online and looked in Lake Wylie. If you've got a flat piece of land in Lake Wylie for sale right now, $199,000 an acre. Depending on the topo, it's going to be somewhere around $100,000 or greater. So let's just go with $100,000. If we're passing an ordinance that affects someone's ability, whether it be a family member or a farmer that's farmed the land all their life, and this is their retirement, to choose between $10,000, $15,000 an acre for their land, or $100,000 an acre, maybe even 200 on some of those plots, I think they're going to want to have the right for the higher value, with limitations from us. So I personally believe ultimately, I'm not into developing York County, and I hope everybody's listening to everything that I'm saying and not picking one or two things out. But when you go back to the ordinance prior to 2022, it allowed an AGC homeowner to parcel their land out to non-family owners, but it was restricted to three average, it has to be an average of three acres or more in their development. I think they should have the right to do that. It's still a limitation, but I think they should have the right to do it. And then you've got minor subdivisions that an AGC owner is going to be limited to. I think we ought to have a provision for a minor subdivision that allows for a private gravel road that meets county requirements, the right shoulders, the right gravel depth and all that, for a minor subdivision. And I think that's, isn't that six or seven? Y'all know what it is? I'm not even sure. This is where we need clarification, but from seven? Okay, thank you. And then if they want a major subdivision, it's still going to be limited to three acres or more. And the last thing I'll say is, and I'm sure all of you did the same thing, you took the document that Jonathan sent us, and you went through it, and you read it, you digested it, you understand it. Well, think about this. Going back to y'all's committee meeting that you had when y'all discussed this, when you look at that big plot of AGC land, what if you own the land in the middle of that plot, and they came to council to get it rezoned? Because you have to have 10 acres or more, and you have two dwellings and one accessory use on 10 acres or more? Everybody that had 9.99 or less can't do that, it's 10 or more. But if you happen to own 1,000 acres in the middle of all this AGC, council's not going to vote to spotzone it, they're not going to vote to move it to RUD. You're going to have to wait, 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 until the fringes that touch RUD and other zonings get rezoned before you'll have the chance to do something with your property realistically. So I think this is a pretty serious issue, and I'd like for staff to go back and look at 2, 4, and 5, and come back and give us a little bit more depth in this conversation to understand this more greatly, while taking into consideration what they put in our packet on page 10. 6,241 AGC parcels, 3,663 of those 6,241 are affected by our ordinance. That concerns me. Not that I want to see York County develop out, but three acres or more land is a lot of land, and you still maintain the integrity if you have that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'd start off by saying, this council and this county has to put a pin in what we want to call AGC, because the last year and a half, it's been a sliding scale of what we call AGC. Some say five acres, some say 10 acres, some still want to call AGC three acres. Well, it can't be all three of them. And we've rezoned property to RUD in the midst of AGC in this last six months to a year. So don't say we can't do it. But I think that's our biggest challenge is, what's the bottom line that we're going to call AGC? Because AGC, let's remember, AGC gets a break on their taxes. And three acres amongst an area with, if five acres is the minimum, and bump wants to put a three-acre home in there and call it AGC, I don't think that's right. Because five was the minimum, how can we drop it down and say, we're going to allow three? And I don't know if we took away property owners' rights in 2022, when we made some modifications to say about whether it's two homes on a property, but if you only have five acres, and you're calling it AGC, I don't think it's right that you're able to put two homes on a five-acre lot. That's, we're going against what AGC stands for. AGC doesn't, shouldn't allow for higher density. And if you're able to put two homes on a five-acre lot, that's not AGC. Because we have some in RUD that's bigger lots than that that have fewer homes in it. So how can AGC have two and a half, two homes on five acres, and we still call it AGC? They still getting tax breaks on their property, putting two homes there. So we need to figure out, the bottom line is, what's the least amount of property can we have and still call it AGC? Because some areas, it's five acres, some acres, 10 acres. So we've got to make that determination so that we can be consistent. I wrote down rights versus what we call in AGC. And if someone has that same 1,000 acres, and they want to put 33 or whatever, whatever you said, about 33 lots in it, that's a major subdivision. There's a whole bunch of other things that kick into gear with water, sewer, roads. So it's not just that easy. Somebody got all this land, wants to subdivide it up. And I don't want to get into having four or five different boxes to check for family members, non-family members. Who's going to keep the eye on making sure that somebody doesn't get this property and wait three years, four years, five years, before they build a house and sell a house? We've got to remember, there's a lot of moving parts, and I don't think this council needs to put four different boxes to where you can give, you should be able to give your family member- your family member, family member, how many acres you want to give them. But if it doesn't meet the minimum that we're going to set, and it goes back to what we're going to establish, what's the minimum? Don't give a family member three acres, call it AGC, then next you turn around and say, I should be able to put two homes on an AGC lot, which the rules, I think, some have fought to say that two homes can go on an AGC lot. So now you've got three-acre tract, homeowner, property owner comes, say, I should be able to put two homes on AGC. Now you've got an acre and a half per home versus five-acre tract that you once fought for to get two homes, which made it two and a half acres. So we've got to put that bottom basement line in there of what we call AGC. Do we say three-acre AGC tracks only get one home? Do we say five-acre tracks can have two homes? Do we say 10-acre tracks can have four homes? We've got to establish something that we can operate off of, because it seems to be a sliding scale, and it gets confusing with all of what we're trying to do. Because if I had an AGC tract, it's three acres, I would stand up there at that podium and say, I should be allowed to put two homes on my three-acre tract, because you just let so-and-so put two homes on their AGC. So we've got to establish that, and I think until we do that, it's always going to be a back and forth. And everybody has family members that we're trying to give land to to make it easier for them to build and be successful, but we have to establish that baseline of what is the bottom basement that we can call AGC.
100% agree with you. We have to not only define what AGC is, we have to define who we're representing. And we are representing, in my opinion, in my personal opinion, we are representing the people, the landowners, the property owners who have AGC, who value AGC, not necessarily the ones who want to come in and do a minor subdivision out in the middle of all these properties. If you've got 1,000-acre property, like you're using your example, you know what? You've got a lot of different parcels touching that, and they're there for a reason. They are, they're not looking to, to have a big neighborhood out in the middle of AGC. So, you know, I understand AGC, I represent AGC. And, you know, there's the difference in, in how we maybe look at things, but I was in the committee meeting, and, and one of the things that I thought made sense was to say, you know what, if AGC, if we have a five-acre minimum for AGC, if you want to put two homes on that property, you're going to need a 10-acre minimum. So that the minimum for AGC, as defined currently, that's how it's defined, is still five-acre minimum lots. So I think we have to think about the people who maybe have a five-acre lot, who don't want two neighbors on each side of them. They want their neighbors to be also on five-acre lots. And, and so I, I think the definition of who, who we're representing, and I don't think we've heard from those people. So I kind of like number five, because I do think it's a much larger scope than for us to sit here and say, hey, we've got this many people that we're, we're limiting their property rights. Well, we do. But what we have, on the other hand, is their neighbors are their neighbors, who we are giving away, and we're watering down what they have, why they have it. So, and, and the other thing I think we need to talk about, it's easy to sit up here, and I'm not talking about anybody that's sitting up here, but it's easy to sit up here and talk about what somebody might want to do, and maybe they have a family member that wants to move back to their property, and, you know, maybe they've got five acres, and they want to give the family member one acre. You know what? That, that one acre is not as critical to that person as the person who's got 100 acres and wants to come back and have, have five or 10 acres. And, and let's not fight for the people who aren't wanting to do what we're fighting for. I think that's the key. You know, talk about, hey, my, my kids might want to come back and live here. Will do they want to come back and live there? Because what you're getting ready to do is take something that's in your mind, that maybe they do or maybe they don't, and you're going to set precedent for the whole rural part of York County. It's one of the most, it's one of the most valuable things this county has. Well, we've got a lake, too, but you can't get to it unless you live on it. So this rural property is, is so important, and, and I'm not going to be on this council next year, but I don't want the people surrounding York County, in York County, to look back and say, you know what, that's what that council of 2024 and 2025, and we'll probably still be talking about it, so that council of '24, '25, and '26 did to York County. It's the worst thing that could possibly happen here. And I think we need, number five makes us take, or makes you take, a longer, harder look at it.
Okay. I wholeheartedly agree with number five. I think that this is something that we have talked and talked, and still talking about. And we're, and landowners are confused, and we are confused. But we have the opportunity to take a, a critical part of our county, and my heart, I don't live there, but my heart's there, and, and do something good. Do something right, make it right, make it to where people are comfortable with the decision, and I think that our, our group, they're chomping at the bit to, to get this right. So let's give them the opportunity, and I will support number five.
Yeah, I support number five. Originally, whenever this here started, my main concern was with families and all which we can clearly see there's so many different ways to look at it, and, and looking at things in a rural setting because of the simple fact of, there are still a lot of farms on RUD and all, too, and we can call it AGC, RUD, whatever, but it's more in line with me just to say country people in general. Because I understand that a whole vast number of people that live in AGC don't farm. I also understand in our western side over here, a lot of the land ain't even farmable. Blackjack's got the best rocock. We've got the best areas to raise cows. So I think number five would work, but I don't think it's going to be no quick fix by no means, because there's a lot to go over in this.
Well, I'm glad to hear from council. I mean, I think when this came up, there was, first of all, we realized that there are things that are in the code that I don't think folks understood, and, and certainly didn't understand how it was being interpreted, but have to agree with our county manager. When you go and take a look at the map, and over a third of the current AGC parcels don't fit what's in our code, that, that's, that's what tells you you've got to change it. I mean, and when you have somebody who has come into you before council, who has 4.96 acres, and we're telling them, you can't even put one house on it, that's a problem that you need to fix. And when you have provisions in the zoning code that say AGC should be two units to five acres, but in other places, it's taken away, there are problems that need to be fixed. So I, I think that number five, which basically says, take a larger scope, because I don't think anyone on council is saying, go put big developments out in the middle of, of nowhere. But we do have to take a look at transitions, because if we don't, we're missing out on, on how to deal with communities, and we're going to see a lot of annexations. Right now, the city of Rock Hill is annexed, there's 400 acres that, that, that folks are looking at, and they currently have an ability to do two-acre lots. We don't even have that. I mean, we used to have the ability to do a three-acre average, used to, right now, the problem is, what council is stuck with is either five acres for one, which is not even consistent with what the map shows we've done historically, but the only option we give is to go to one acre. So for instance, when this gentleman comes to us with 4.96 acres, and, and they say, you know, staff says, you can't put one house on there, you're going to have to rezone it, the only option was to go to RUD, which allows them to actually put four houses on there. But we have to do a deed restriction to pull it back to one acre. So, so I think, I mean, the question, I will say this, though, the question of taxes is totally different. You have to meet that threshold, and, and I do want that clarified, so I don't want folks thinking that, that any of this zoning issue impacts that. There's a statutory provision that, that deals with that. That's totally separate from what we're talking about.
Correct. It's the use of the property, not the zoning that sets the tax rate.
So, so there's just a lot here to unpack. When I look at other districts and how they're treating AGC, there are so many other options. There are two-acre options, there's, you know, what I'm seeing is, even in some of these districts, you can carve off an acre for a family to have it if it's a larger parcel. So just for purposes of, of making sure, I don't know that folks can see what we're talking about when we say pick number five, what we're talking about is to consider a larger scope project to evaluate the rural zoning districts, AGC, AGC-1, RUD, RUD-1, RC, and RI. The purpose and implementation for each, and whether adjustments should be made amongst them, and then figure out how to marry that to the comprehensive plan goals, because I, I think there are a lot of goals and competing goals, but we've got some issues to clean up in our, in our code. So hearing the consensus, I think we're going to move forward with five and look to, do you have another comment?
Yeah, yeah. I wanted to point out that I know in our committee, when we were talking about, talking about this, we, we discussed having that oh-so-close option for staff. So that someone did come up with 4.96 or just short of having them to rezone, which, like you said, would allow them to put more homes, let's work with our residents if they're so close. Now, if you've got 4.
That's the, that's the next one. We're going, the third option, we'll talk through that one.
No, it's not, it's the same as, we talked about it in, under that discussion in the committee.
But we have a third, we have a third.
Yeah, but it's different.
Discussion item that deals with issues related to the, the lot size that you're talking about.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
For, our next discussion item is, is zoning.
Madam Chair. One, one follow-up, please. Before 2022, AGC allowed anybody with any size property, one acre, two acre, three acre, didn't matter, allowed them the right to two houses and an accessory use. In 2022, it was changed to 10 acres. So if you look, there are 6,241 AGC parcels of land in York County. So when council in 2022 made the decision to shift to 10 acres, you negatively affected 3,663 parcels of land. And guess what? You changed the value of their land, and we didn't even give them anything for it, and they don't even really know that it was taken from them, until they decide to do something with their land, and then they say, I never knew this. This didn't make sense to me. Furthermore, I'm not suggesting that we develop land, but we have taken the right-of-way from Tommy Atkins, as an example. He couldn't take his land and divide it into average three-acre plots of land. Well, he can, he's RUD, but if he were AGC, he couldn't do it under our, under our current ordinance, because we took that away. You took away the opportunity for somebody that has held on the land for years during 2008 and other times when the economy was down, they held on to it to do something with it at some point, so they could put reasonable money in their pocket. So I'm just suggesting you take into consideration, as you deliberate this, take in consideration what AGC was before 2022, what it is now, what you think it might ought to be in the future.
I don't think there's any argument with that. To me, number five basically includes consideration of two, three, four. Those are, those may be solutions to take a look at all of the problems that, that's how I understood number five. Is that how you understand it?
That is correct. Yeah, we're going to study what it was, what it is, we're going to talk to residents, we're going to learn about their experiences, we're going to spend a lot of time digging into what it could be, and then reporting back to you.
What, what was taken, what was there, and then how do you figure out a transition? So I think we're.
But make sure, though, in this, though, you're going to have to include RUD land, too, because there's a lot of farming on RUD, and a lot of big parcels.
Well, and that's why we're looking at rural zoning districts, so that's all inclusive.
Like my main, yeah, I know. My main, my main thing is, though, is when, when children are growing up, and if you take, whether it's my large family or anyone else's, these kids should not be hindered in receiving their inheritance, and then I, there's 10,000 different ways to look at, and it's going to be a tough thing to, to whittle out. But the main thing is, is not taking people's rights.
I definitely think that what I'm hearing through number five is, is considering all of those things, family exemptions, making sure that those things were, are looked at, what was allowed, what wasn't. All of that is why a, a more comprehensive review is, is necessary, but including all of those possibilities.
I agree.
All right. So is there anything, management, that you need from us, or do you have direction? Okay.
No, I think we're good. We'll work on a project scope and, and share more details with y'all about the timeline we think we'll need to accomplish that. But that's one of those projects that our newest assistant manager will be helping with, Thomas Couch, so I, I think that'll be a great first project for planning staff and Tom to work on.
All right. Item number three. Council two discussed potential zoning code text amendments related to lot area measurement. Anything from management before we have a discussion?
Diane Dills here, too, to help answer any questions. I think with this one, where the committee landed was adding flexibility, and when this first came back to y'all, I didn't hear any disagreement with, with where the committee landed, but what this goes to, if you look at the, the document, is really looking into the problem as defined as, you know, there's an impact when right-of-way is not included into the total lot size. However, this is really not the case for any of our peers, and, and it doesn't make sense to all of a sudden include right-of-way as the total lot measurement. That would have a lot of trickle-down impacts this document lays out, the problems with doing that, and it would make staff's job a little more complicated. The first chart on this, table four, shows what all of our peers across the state are doing, and as you all see, they all exclude right-of-way. So this isn't something that we would necessarily recommend going back. Where the committee talked when this was at the committee, and you'll see this lined up, was really looking at how it impacts potential accessory dwelling units. If you don't have quite an acre, that was one example that was brought before y'all recently, where somebody had 0.9 of an acre, and if you had included right-of-way, it would have been an acre. So there, there were some limitations on what they could do. So if you go to the very end and you look at the options, you know, you could do the, the status quo, continue to exclude right-of-way from lot area calculation, which is what all our peers do. You could revert back to the old methodology. And then three and four are flexibility items that the committee considered and, and recommended in terms of, of options to make this a little bit easier and give staff some flexibility. Happy to answer any questions related to that, and like I said, Diane is here to help as well.
Want to go first, Mr. Roddy?
Yeah. So I was just sitting here thinking about how many pieces of, how many plaits or parcels of land that's been on our books before a road ever come through there? And it would say, all right, your property stands all the way up to the front of this desk. Now that that road has come through, I have this old plaque sitting here that says, I got 10 acres. Now all of a sudden, a road comes through, takes a sliver of it, and makes a road, and I've lost that. So now you're saying I don't have 10 acres. And I'm sure that's probably how some of this has come about, because we have these old plaits of record that were never updated because the property hadn't changed hands, but my plaque says 10 acres, but that was before the road come through there. So now that the road has come through, I'm left with 9.8, or 9.86, or 9.9. And I don't want to get into a, a kicking match, for lack of a better term, with somebody who's lost a piece of land because a road has eventually come through the property that was never on the record. And so I think that's how we get to some of these issues where people who say, hey, I started out with 10 acres, how did I end up with 9 point whatever it is? And that's where common sense has to come into place with us, with our staff, to recognize, no one's trying to get over on us, no one's trying to pass something that they shouldn't be doing, but recognize that, hey, this document was recorded before a road ever come through. That's where the, how we measuring kind of gets lost in the shuffle. And we, we've had a situation like that just this year, where somebody thought they had 10 acres, and they just had, I think it was 9.85, 9.86. We use our better judgment to, to go ahead and allow that. So I just want our staff to have that flexibility, have that common sense approach to resolve them, because everything shouldn't come down to, well, you got to have 10 on the spot. What happened? You know, someone didn't just sell that person 9.86 and tell them that they had 10. It's, let's use some of our better judgment when we're making some of these decisions to make things work. This should be a, a chamber that, that people come in to look for, for us to give a reason to make it work, not always give them a reason not to allow them to do something. And we talk about property rights, that's, that's the first thing that we can do to let the public know that, hey, when you come here, we're going to do all we can to make it work. If there's an absolute way that we can't do it, we have no choice, but if there's a way that we can do it. But if there's a way that we can do it, I want people to stand there and feel like they have a vote of confidence that we can make things work and not just be the council, well, sorry buddy, you're 9.86, you got to see if you can buy a sliver of land from your neighbor to build a house on it. I don't think that's what the message we want to send to anybody.
Yeah, I agree with that. I know, just like on my own property, on the road front and sides, my pins are literally in the middle of the road. So if you count, the pins are in the middle of the road, you got five foot worth of ditch there and another six foot on half of the road. You still, you know, at one time, it was included in that acreage when it was purchased.
I believe number four addresses that. So, and then we could also, I like number three, to consolidate and improve accessory structure standards for the accessories, accessory buildings. What do you guys think?
I agree with that.
So three and four. One of, one of the questions that I have is, are, should we be treating all of these things the same? Should AGC, should RUD, should they be treated the same as higher-density developments? Because I understand that part of the resistance to just, let's reverting back to the old. I mean, if you, if we revert back to the old, then we wouldn't have this problem at all. The problem is the trickle-down idea that if you have RC, the ones that are high-density, that if you have a big parcel, that could really make a bigger difference. But when you're talking about larger parcels, you don't have that same fear. And that's part of the concern that I see throughout some of the code, is that we're treating the rural districts the same as the higher, high-density districts. And so, I guess to ask the question, I know when we first had some, some feedback, the solutions and the proposals that we got would not have addressed the situation where the gentleman came and had just shy of five acres, because it was a lot-size configuration. There was no recommendation for that. I would like to know, what is the four, is number four the solution that staff, is that something that you think addresses that, that issue?
So number four is, when it's close, I don't know what the, how close it would have to be, I'd have to ask staff what number four would cover, but that specific example, I don't know.
Is that, is that an additional option than what we were previously given?
Yeah.
Because I think one of the, one of the questions I had was that there was no way to do, no way to give that, that grace on a lot size, and that that was not recommended.
Yeah, I don't know, Diane, if you could speak to that or not.
And if you're not, if, if this is something that we need to take a closer look at before we make a definitive decision, I just knew the last time we talked about this, the proposals we got didn't, wouldn't have fixed that situation.
I thought it was based on what the road frontage would have been. Like, I thought it was based on, like, what you could add back to that. Like, we had the guy who came, he had 15 acres, and his third acreage was a little bit short. So I thought it was what it would add back if, if his road frontage had decreased because of the lines being not in the middle of the road anymore, but on the, on his property.
Right. There's two things going on here. One is whether you're going to measure the lot size for accessory structure, and that's where we began talking about allowing to be able to do an adjustment for that, for the accessory structure. But staff was still saying that if you don't have five acres without the right-of-way, you still would not have five acres. So we would not want to, we would not recommend including our area in the right-of-way when it comes to actually measuring the lot size, minimum lot size requirements. And there's a good discussion about that in the document as to why that would not be an appropriate way to go.
I guess the question is, which of these solves the problem of the lot size that's, that's less than a tenth of an acre?
None of these would, with the lot size part. If you have to have five acres outside of the right-of-way, none of these address that situation.
Well, I guess reverting back to the old methodology would.
That would.
Okay. That's why I support that one, then.
The old methodology, yeah.
If that's the only option we got, that's why I wanted to make sure.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, I'm not, I wouldn't support anything that didn't fix that problem.
And that's including going to the road, in the road.
Yeah, I mean, apparently the only option on here that would fix that issue would be to revert back to the old methodology.
To include it.
Correct. And I think, I think we ought to consider reverting back for the larger rural area, and maybe the trickle-down issue makes sense for the ones that have four houses to an acre. That could make a difference. But these bigger lots, you're not going to ever have that problem.
You could always loop this into our study of the rural zoning districts if you want.
As long as we make progress quick enough, we're, I don't want, I don't want this thing.
These are big challenges that are hard to tackle, so.
I know, we're going to have to make some progress quick.
But we're committed to it.
I'm, I'm comfortable with, I'm comfortable with that being looped into that. But if we don't have, to me, that's an easy fix, revert back on the large stuff, so.
If y'all want to sign that specifically back to staff on its own, that works as well. I think it's, it's up to y'all how you want us to handle this. I would say I would not recommend going back how it was for everybody. And I think you just don't look any further from, from what our peers are doing. I don't think that would be a good idea. But if you want us to look specifically at AGC, we can look at that and then come back to y'all, if that's a go-do.
I think at least coming up, making sure we've exhausted, what are the options to fix that problem?
And then I think the other thing in terms of that is, do you want that to go back to committee, or do you want that to come back to the full council? I think that's something else for y'all to consider.
Just come back to council, yeah, come on.
I'm hearing just come back to council on that one.
Yeah.
I agree.
All right.
Since we're talking about this, I want to throw this out, since this is jumping off my page, we have 2,100 lots that are five acres or less.
Less than five.
Yeah, less than five, less than five. This is what's, this is where it gets important to those extra feet. And if we're talking about helping make things work, those extra feet will make a big difference in those lots, like Chris said, versus someone who has 100 acres, or someone who has 50 acres. When you start getting the smaller lot sizes and wanting to do different things with those smaller lot sizes, that extra seven, eight feet from the lot line to the road makes a huge difference of what people will be able to do with that lot size. And if we're not, I don't want to say giving them credit for it, that's one way to look at it, but they're going to be more restrictive of what they can do if they lose that, that footage to be able to say, hey, we can include this in to allow you to do exactly what you want to do. Because if we don't include it, now we have to tell you, know that you can't do it because you don't meet the, you don't meet the requirements for the lot size. So, just want to throw that out.
But it's better to give on that. It's better to say, okay, here's your total. It's better to say, okay, here, you're a little bit under the total, but we're going to allow you this, this road than to have somebody come in at 4.95, and they've already, that does include the road. So you've got some give in one of those examples, but maybe not in the, in the other. I'm just seeing some distortion.
That's why this isn't easy. So, yeah, I agree.
It's like having a pair of rubber boots with holes in them.
I've, I've looked at some of our, Lancaster County, theirs is a whole lot easier to read and has a lot more flexibility. Chester's does. Ours is just, good luck with that. But we're going to be pushing for change quick. All right. First item in new business, council to consider initiating a rezoning pursuant to York County Code of Ordinances 155.1137A1 to rezone 48 split-zone parcels along Sandifer Road as listed in Exhibit A from the Agricultural Cultural Conservation, AGC Rural Development, RUD, and Residential Single Family 40, RSF 40 districts to the AGC 1 zoning district in order to place the parcels into a single appropriate zoning district.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Halls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Item number two, council to suspend the council rules without referral to, referral of the proposed resolution to a committee and adopt the resolution of the York County Council declaring the results of the referendum held on November 5, 2024, on the imposition, or reimposition of a 1% sales and use tax pursuant to the Capital Project Sales Tax Act.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll just say, 71% in an area where our state, throughout the state, they've struggled with communities. A lot of, a lot of the counties didn't get theirs passed, and I just want to say thank you to our Penny staff. I want to say thank you to, to the folks that helped to do this, and for our community for getting educated and understanding how important this is for us to be able to get our roads done. Is there anything, if you want to add?
So I'll just say that there were nine counties in the state that tried to put a 1% sales tax forward. Only four of them passed, five of them failed. We were one of the four, 71% was the highest of those four, with the next highest being at 61%. So we were above and beyond all the other counties throughout the state, so just wanted to pass that information along.
And I, I think it's critical, and folks who, who understand how the program works, it's a no-brainer, especially when, I think our county does a really good job of adding repaving projects on there and to leverage our existing, that's, that's amazing. Folks don't even realize, when we leverage our existing reserves to get those roads repaved, don't have to deal with the right-of-way or the, or the utility relocation costs that can create problems. To get that done, four, within four years, what the voter passed, less than what was budgeted, that's fantastic. So, thank you to all those. Halls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that moves forward. Item number three, council to approve award regarding bid number 2947 for HVAC renovations at York County's planning building to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Edison Ford LLC of Charlotte, North Carolina, for a total project cost of $1,686,435 as part of the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Halls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving now to item number four, council to approve an award regarding bid number 2943 for HVAC renovations at York County's Heckle Complex to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Farrar Weist LLC of Indianland at South Carolina, for a total cost of $7,973,131.51 as part of the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Halls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Item number five, council to approve award regarding bid number 2945 for the Sheriff's Office District 3 renovation project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, J&amp;B Services LLC of Daleville, Alabama, for a total cost of $2,580,362.40, which includes county contingency as part of the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Halls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Item number six, council to authorize taxes included in Presido cybersecurity software invoice in the amount of $13,527.60 through the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Halls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Item number seven, council to provide first reading of an ordinance authorizing the First Amendment of that certain fee agreement by and between York County, South Carolina, Performance Friction Corporation, a PFC, Realty Limited Partnership, relating to, without limitation, one, updating the investment requirement of the project, and two, extending the investment period, investment period of the project and other related matters.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Halls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. We will now go to, I believe it was number seven in consent. Counsel to approve the Penny's five utility relocation policy.
Motion.
Do you have a motion?
Motion to defer a vote on this to December the 3 during consent agenda.
December 2.
Is it 2nd?
Let's say the next meeting.
Next meeting, yes, next meeting. And first meeting in December. Sorry.
Do we have a second?
I just have a question.
We got to get a second.
I'll second it. But I have a question.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
December 2, you're right.
So we're just going to defer, are we going to hear about this? Are we going to answer some questions?
Yeah, we're getting to this, I couldn't discuss it until now, but I'd be glad to discuss it, since I deferred it.
Not to talk about it now, but I mean, if we're going to refer that to consent, when are we going to talk about it publicly?
So, so discussion, is that okay? Quick discussion. I want to give my reasoning for pulling this out and deferring this. I don't know how many phone calls you all took today, but I took a lot of phone calls from people that are affected. They feel like they're affected on White Street. I took calls from members of the commission. I reached out to members of the commission as a result of the phone calls. I've talked to county staff. And all due respect, individually, at the next meeting when I vote, I'm going to stick with what I believe we've done consistently through Penny's 3 and 4. There's a process, and I think we followed the process. All due respect to the individuals that feel a little differently, I felt like that deferring this would give our staff an opportunity to talk with those individuals and maybe put them at ease with why, when, when we pass the Penny's project and there's discussion of utilities, what we typically do is like to like. So, we don't take utilities that are above ground and put them below ground, right? But there's some confusion over that, and so I just think sometimes you're better off talking through something, having an opportunity to talk about it, and agree to disagree. But I, for one, can't see me not supporting what our staff and what was in consent agenda when we vote on it December the 2.
Well, I'm happy to have that conversation now. This is the same policy we had for Penny's 3 and Penny's 4.
That'd be great.
And I think people were aware of that, so we're not changing anything on anybody. I think one of the questions that came up today was, you know, the, the power lines, the electric lines, you know, why are we not burying those as part of the White Street project? Well, Patrick's here, we're happy to tell y'all, we don't think we even have to move those power lines. So that really doesn't make a lot of sense, but because we do like for like, you know, if a utility wants to bury their power lines, so be it, but that's on them. That should not surprise anybody that's worked with us in Penny's 3 or 4. This thing has not changed. That's why we thought this was on consent, because it is the same policy we've had for the last two pennies. We're happy to answer any questions y'all have tonight. Patrick's here. We think this makes sense, and it's worthwhile moving forward so we can begin work on Penny's.
Any other discussion, or do we need to hear from?
I'll just say, you know, I got, I received a couple of phone calls today as well. I reached back out to staff to say, hey, what are we changing in this policy? And it was clear as day, we're not changing anything. We're sticking with doing the same thing we've done on Penny's 3 and 4. So if we're not changing anything, we've already reached out to those, basically the city of Rock Hill, to say, nothing's changing. We're still doing like for like. If you want to bury your power lines, you're free to do so, but we're not taking power lines above ground and paying the additional expense of burying them underground. And I don't see the need to kick the can down the road, because I don't want someone else being able to dictate what our policies are. We've communicated to them, here's our policy, it's been consistent, we're not changing anything from this penny's, from the last two pennies. So why are we deferring, just to please some of our friends and neighbors and people who call us, who think they have a inside track to pick up the phone and call us? Let's don't succumb to that. We know what our policy is, we know what, if we know we're going to vote for it at the next meeting, that's just another hurdle we're going to put up for the next meeting. Let's pass this, move on, because there's going to be another issue that comes up next meeting. I don't want to get into this thing, hey, let's make a phone call today at a meeting to slow down what we know is inevitable of happening. That's not how we need to be that reactive. I think it's been communicated, here's our policy. If we were changing something, I would have told Josh this afternoon, I would have told Kevin this afternoon, we need to slow down and explain to council, we need to explain to the public, we need to explain to those who would be possibly affected. But no one's been affected when the policy isn't changing. You know, so I don't see the need to defer it, because there's a, there's a bigger message here than just what we're about to do. We had these discussions, we weren't expecting this to get pulled out, but it We had these discussions, we weren't expecting this to get pulled out, but it did, but free to discuss it. I think county manager done a great job of explaining to me, done a great job explaining to this council. Nothing's changing, why are we delaying it? Do we, do we gain anything by doing it tonight versus the next meeting? No. But there's a message to why this is happening, and we need to make sure we address that message by moving forward tonight, and don't allow others to dictate what we approve and disapprove at our meeting. So, I, I'll say, I won't be the support in the deferral. Let's vote on this and move on, because we already know that these wheels move slow as it is. Let's don't do anything to slow it down even further.
So, I would just mention that I think maybe it's just semantics, but, you know, I, I got a couple of calls today too, and then when I looked at it and read it, I want to be sure, you know, I feel like when Rico came along, we missed some stuff. So, this is what it says. In order to be fair to all area utility service providers, staff is recommending York County prepare a policy for providing utility relocation costs associated with the Pennies 5 program. So, it sounds like it's something they haven't seen before. That, that was my concern on that sentence. And then the other one was, with council approval, documentation will be forwarded to all area utility service providers to inform them of the new policy. So, I just wanted to, just, if that's just semantics, and we're talking about it's new, because it's a new pennies, and everything is the same, but it is, is not worded.
Yeah, so the last two pennies, you know, this was approved before the referendum, and so, we decided to wait till after it was approved. But this was something that the utilities actually asked for. So, and, and Patrick, you could speak to the history of that, but there was a lot of confusion, and Pennies 1 and 2, there wasn't a policy. And I think when you don't have a policy, not everybody's treated the same, and things are, are different in one project than another. So, in 1 and 2, we used the DOT criteria, and Patrick's here to answer any specific questions, but the utilities wanted to have some certainty about what was covered and what wasn't. And if you, if we do provide, so for example, if we spent money to bury power lines, that would cost a lot more money for these projects, and we wouldn't have money to do roads, which our residents have asked us to do. And so, the whole point of pennies is to do roads, not utilities. And I think that's, that's the essential meaning. Our, our citizens have asked us to put this $400 million towards roads. And if we're going to pay to bury power lines, that's gonna be very expensive. That's just one of many examples, but the utilities have asked for this policy in the past, and they're, you, you could call the other utilities, they're very familiar with it, and, and their understanding of it. So, Patrick, I don't know if you had anything to add to that.
I mean, if that's the case, I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't have a problem supporting it tonight, but it's just the way it was worded, it seemed, looked like we were doing something new.
I can give a little bit of clarification on that. So, I'm guilty of copying and pasting, so I literally went back to Penny's 4 memo in Minute Track and just copied and pasted into Penny's 5. So, it's, while it's new, because it's Penny's 5, there's, there's nothing new with the policy itself.
Madam Chair.
And the, the estimates that were done on the projects, those were all done across the board using this same policy when estimating those.
Correct. While we were budgeting for Penny's 5, we anticipated it would be the same utility relocation policy as before, so we accounted for all budgeting for utilities that we felt would be in conflict.
If we went from above-ground utilities to burying these utilities now, would we have enough money to do all our projects?
No.
Thank you. That's all I wanted to hear. I think that, that seals the deal with, should we even be tinkering around with considering?
So, for instance, with the, with the specific project that folks have raised issues, $6.5 million, that, that estimate that was put to the voters for $6.5 million, they voted for $6.5 million, that, that includes all of the repaving, the curb and gutter, any, anything that's in the way utility-wise to get that project done.
Correct.
And we're, and so, all that will be done, it will be returned like to like. And the reality is that there's probably not an issue with electric utility that's necessary to do the project work in that. Is that right?
Correct.
Madam Chair, one last comment. So, spent hours today, when I read this in our agenda packet, I had planned on defer, taking this out of consent, and then I went back and read the language in it, but by that time, I've got telephone call, I have telephone call from citizens and members of the commission, and so forth and so on. So, when you're thinking about this, what do you do? Do you not do anything? You just ignore the people that called you today? And we wouldn't have had any of this discussion. So, what you shared, which I appreciate you sharing, people that are listening that felt differently, now have an explanation. If I had not taken this out of consent, there would have been no discussion on this tonight as if we're ignoring them. And I have a problem with that. So, I apologize if you're uncomfortable that I'm suggesting we take this out. We took it out of consent, now it's a new business, and we'll vote in, vote on it on the 2nd, but I felt like it was the right thing to do so we could have this discussion and people could understand why, I'm guessing, we'll end up approving this on the 2nd. I plan on voting for what was suggested, but I thought this was the right way to do it. I will tell you, this was not an easy decision, this was very uncomfortable to do this, because I know how some of you felt, and, and members of staff felt, but I, I still, I think it was the right thing to do. And this gives staff a chance to.
I think clarification is always important.
Yes.
You know, especially, you know, we've got, especially when it's a referendum, and we want people, they, they have to know that we're accountable and everything, but, but at the same time, I, I would, I want to change, can I change my, I don't know how to change my motion, can I make a motion?
Either withdraw your 2nd, or do you want to change, are you satisfied that discussion's been had, if you want to withdraw your motion and just move to approve?
Yes, I would just withdraw my 2nd. Can I withdraw my 2nd and make a motion to approve?
Point of order, can you withdraw 2nd?
I, I'll say this, I, I'm not in favor of withdrawing my 1st, because we had a chance to, our staff.
I'm sorry?
Staff had a chance to explain our position. Now, if somebody else, like the gentleman that spoke tonight, wants to have his chance to talk to our county manager and let our county manager explain, or Patrick explain, he's got until the 2nd to do it.
So, so, point of order, the, the 2nd can be withdrawn?
Can be withdrawn prior to you restating the question for our vote, so yes.
Do you want to, do you want to withdraw?
So, I'll withdraw my 2nd, yes.
There you go.
And I'll make a new motion to approve.
Do we have a 2nd?
2nd on his motion.
The motion is now, no, the motion was withdrawn.
No, she withdrew 2nd.
Okay. So, I, I motion to approve, or 2nd.
You are seconding her motion to approve.
Yeah, I'm seconding her motion.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries 6 to 1. Move now to item number 12.
I have 1.
I'm sorry.
You said 6 to 1.
Yep, 5 to 1. Can't count tonight.
There's a little confusion there.
All right, this one, I need to say this before I read this one. So, all right, so out of, out of abundance of caution, I'm gonna recuse myself from the vote for this action so as to avoid any possible appearance of an ethical issue. My teenage son, who graduated high school earlier this year, works temporarily for this company. He starts as a lineman at York Tech in January, he's ending his employment this year. The original bid was awarded to the company as lowest bidder the year before he even applied in the change orders, and the, the change order are funded by pre-approved contract contingencies and a grant. So, I'm gonna recuse myself and turn this over to you, would love to read that. Number 12.
Okay, number 12 from consent. Council to approve change order number 2 totaling $119,496.98 for Lightner Construction Company regarding bid number 2882, Project 21335 for Ebenezer Park Phase 2 to construct a turnaround at the park entrance.
Motion to approve.
2nd.
Motion and 2nd, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Where are we now? We do not have, do we, we don't have any committee or other reports. Do we have any council, new non-agenda comments before we go into executive session? We don't have an executive, oh, we don't have an executive session. So, you're holding us up from adjournment, Mr. Roddy.
I got an extra 10 minutes there, I got an extra 10 minutes. I'll just, I'll just say, just to piggyback off the comment that Wash just made, I think healthy discussions are, are good. Like you said, we wouldn't have had that open discussion, maybe we, hopefully we cleared up some concerns, people here, people watching on TV, or maybe watch online even later. But I think one thing that's unique with this council is we're at a space where the public wants to know what we think, how we feel, how we vote, and so, I welcome all the, the healthy debate. I think it's, it's good for this body, it's good for our community, because we can all sit up here and vote the same way each and every time, but I don't think that's the flavor of the day of this council. And I hope we never get to that point, because we all see things through, through a different lens, but I think we all want the same thing. So, let's keep the healthy debates going on, on any and all issues, and I think at the end of the day, when we come together to do the right thing for our county, I think